A call to order, the May 4th, 2021, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Jean, could we do an attendance, please?
Well, Kate Bargnizi.
Here.
Kelly Cormier.
Here.
Peter Boynton.
Here.
Aaron Preston. Aaron?
Present.
Thank you. Eton?
I am here.
John Simons? Okay.
Okay, just a reminder, before I read our statement, if you are not actively speaking, please mute yourself. So, for instance, Mr. Brown, right now, can you please mute yourself? Aaron, can you please mute yourself right now? So, if you do get feedback, please use the raise hand feature, and I'll know that we're having some feedback, and we'll try to adjust accordingly. Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their television by turning to Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or going online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to our planning director, Jean Enright. Her email address is J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. For the record, can we note that Mr. Simons is here with us at Town Hall? Great, so now we have everybody. We're going to go to 1210 Osgood Street, bond release. Jeff Brown, Princeton Properties, request for release of a $40,000 performance bond.
Okay, so this was, application was for 192 residential unit, a component of a mixed-use development that has 43,000 square feet of commercial space being constructed in the front of it. The permit was approved in December of 2016. The project is fully built out for the residential component. They have received all the COs for the clubhouse, as well as the four residential buildings. They are requesting their bond release in the amount of $40,000. There is a condition prior to the release of the bond that is specified in the staff report. It is Condition 86, that requires a traffic monitoring program post-development within one year of the issuance of the CO. The traffic report is to be submitted to Mass DOT, as well as the planning department. Now, that exact same condition is also carried in the commercial decision, as well as Condition 89. I can only say that the intent of the traffic monitoring program was when the entire project is fully built out, meaning both the commercial and the residential. I would estimate the commercial will not be fully built out for at least two years, possibly three years. And that condition being there, the board has some protection that we, before releasing that bond, will be able to hold the traffic monitoring program in place. And so, the applicant has asked for an insubstantial change to waive this requirement prior to release of bond.
To waive it entirely, or to move it?
Well, that would be the end. Once we release the bond money, there's no more milestones to reach, so their project would be fully completed. But the monitoring program is still in place because it's conditioned in the commercial project as well.
Right, but what happens if the commercial project finishes, and then we don't get...
They don't, they have a $40,000 bond posted also, and so they wouldn't get, they wouldn't get released.
I had two questions, one separate from this, is because there's sort of an intersection of the commercial and the residential, even though they're technically separate, is there any punchless stuff related to the residential piece that, you know, that needs to be done? Or is it literally completely done, and all dependent on the commercial piece at this point?
Yeah, so it's all completely done, in terms of site development, landscaping. We have the engineer's certification letter. I've visited the site. I will say that the only caveat to that is, there's been some stormwater treatment equipment installed on the site, and so Conservation Commission Order of Conditions has an enforcement order to ensure that that treatment system is maintained and operational. I think they're estimating for the next three years or so, and so there's an agreement between the two property owners in terms of the common areas associated with that treatment system. And, again, I will say that piece is fully protected within the Order of Conditions. It's located on the residential side, but the stormwater, of course, is running from commercial across the residential.
So, I guess my other question is, in light of what ETAD said about the, you know, the traffic study, why don't we just hold back what is a reasonable amount of money for that and give them the rest?
Yeah, I mean, I can let Jeff Brown speak to that, but I would say, as an alternative, they could put up an escrow fund in the amount of like $3,500 to contribute towards the monitoring program, once it's ready to be completed. And the escrow fund would just sit there until such a time that we, that the commercial triggers the monitoring program, and then we pay half of it with those funds.
Wouldn't it be easier just to keep 5,000 or 4,000 left in the bond?
So, I had suggested that. Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, thank you, Jean, and I'm Mr. Chairman, thank you. Jeff Brown from Princeton Properties. We've worked on this issue for some time, with Jean identified this Condition 86 about traffic monitoring. There are two issues of concern that wouldn't allow us to implement traffic monitoring at this time. One, the final coat of pavement along Osgood Street has not been installed because of continuing work for the Amazon utility, so we really don't have our final coat of pavement on the roadway to do a full traffic study. The second, as Jean mentioned, the traffic study is also a condition in a special permit. There are two special permits for this site, one for the residential, and one for the commercial. So, the commercial has a, the same Condition 86, although it's Condition 89, and they are permit for traffic monitoring, and they are not complete, and probably will not be complete for about a year. The commercial site actually produces 2/3 of the traffic to be generated by this site, so really, any monitoring of just the residential portion which is occurring now would not fulfill the purpose of the Condition 86. We did, Jean and I did anticipate this. We went out and got a bid from Vanesson Associates as to what a DOT traffic monitoring program would cost for a year. It is $7,000. That proposal was submitted to Jean. As an alternative, we would agree to put $3,500 in escrow, but would prefer the release of the bond. Again, I think someone had asked, you know, what does the leverage in case the commercial doesn't contribute? And, again, they have the same $40,000 bond as we do, and so I think there's plenty of security for the planning board to enforce that condition on them.
And so, they did submit an estimate from Jeffrey Dirk, but I did not recommend executing that agreement with Jeffrey Dirk. I mean, I just, by the time that the traffic monitoring's coming forward, I would think at that point, we'd get a scope and...
Right, yeah, I mean, that's fine, it doesn't make any sense to do an agreement, yeah, because it's premature, but you have an idea of what it costs, which is great.
Yeah.
I guess my only point, and I don't want to make this, you know, parse small differences, but I still don't understand what the difference is between an escrow account and a keeping the money in the bond. I mean, it would seem to me that they would be functionally the same.
The escrow would be established with the purpose of spending it on the traffic monitoring, just like we set up escrow for stormwater or several, it would be in that form.
Okay, that's fine. If they did that, then I think that's fine.
And I think 3,500, I mean, from what I've seen, based on other studies we've had, it seems reasonable.
What percentage of the residential is occupied right now?
I don't know the exact figure, but I would approximate somewhere north of 85%.
I mean, I drive by there almost every day, and I've never seen an issue with traffic, so I don't think it makes sense to do the traffic study now. I don't think it's going to provide us any useful data at the moment, so, okay. So, can we get a motion to release the remaining bond amount in $40,000, and to allow for an insubstantial change with an added condition of a $3,500 escrow for traffic communication study?
Traffic monitoring program.
Traffic monitoring program, thank you, traffic monitoring program.
And with the release contingent of the bond, of setting up the escrow, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, I'll make that motion.
Motion made, can we get a second, please?
This is Kate, I'll second.
Thank you, Kate. All right, so let's vote, we'll start with Aaron.
Yes.
Peter.
I.
Kate.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thank you.
Can I just say one thing? We've been, Princeton has been coming before this board since 2016 to complete this project, and it turned out to be a successful project, and it may have been said before, but it's been a great pleasure working with the planning board, but more importantly, Jean has just been tremendous to work with. I don't think we would have had such a smooth progress to this project had it not been for Jean's extensive effort. She was tremendous. She should be recognized for her efforts above and beyond the call of duty, and we can't thank both the planning board and Jean enough. So, we are very appreciative that you allowed us to have this project. I think it's been a success for us and for the town, and thank you again for everything, and thank you, Jean.
Thank you. We'll, we'll pass along a note to the town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Kelly, just a reminder, I'm going to recuse myself from the Grape Pond discussion.
I'm going to do the other one, I'd like to do actually the other zoning articles first, because I think they're going to be quicker.
Okay.
And that way, anyone who's there for those can, can log off, so if we can, let's do annual town meeting zoning by law articles first, and then we'll come back to Three Grape Pond Road, because I don't think these will take long.
All right, so as discussed at the last meeting, the five planning board-sponsored zoning amendment articles have all had recommendations made by both this board, as well as the select board, they've all been favorably recommended. I have not received any public comment on them. The hearing remains open, and I would suggest to just leave it open to at least one more meeting, when the housing moratorium will likely be voted on.
Okay, great.
And possibly up until June 15th, if we can have a meeting just prior to that.
Okay, so we'll do that, so we'll continue those until our next meeting, which is?
May 18th.
May 18th, okay. Annual Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Amendment Article Planning Board Report, Citizen Petition Article 10, Joe Finn and others, multi-family housing moratorium, Article 32.
Okay, so, I would just, so I don't forget, one about a comment, I'm sorry, resident comment came in today, late today, it was added to the packet late this afternoon, I don't, you can choose to read it or not read it into the record, but the, I guess it should be read into the record.
For which one?
For the housing moratorium.
Okay.
And it's been added to the agenda link.
Let me do that now, that's...
And I have it on the screen.
Okay. Which, which one is it?
Rebecca Strong.
Rebecca Strong, okay. "To all the members of the planning board, as a lifelong resident of the town of North Andover, I am writing to implore you to fully support the multi-family housing moratorium. North Andover does not need a massive influx of these types of units, and as a community, we need to take pause. Multi-family housing developments will put undue stress on the town's resources, will flood the already crowded schools with additional children, and will increase traffic in already extremely dangerous and congested roadways. Sincerely, Rebecca Strong, 657 Forest Street."
And I would just add, I carried the O'Donnell comments that were read at the last meeting, that were received during the meeting, I've added these into the packet as well, but they have been read.
Okay, very good, thank you. Do we have any additional information that's been supplied?
No.
Okay. Is there any comments, I guess, if, I think I saw Mr. Finn potentially sign on, is there any comments that any, that he, that any of the applicants want to make? Nobody has to make any comments, but if anybody wants to make any comments, now's the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm set. It's Joe Finn.
Thank you very much, okay.
Eton, I do have one comment since the last meeting to update. So, the board seemed to be supportive of a study, at least for the water and sewer capacity analysis. I have met with the water treatment plant, they do have some data that they submit to DEP each year. I've also talked to the town manager, Melissa, and she would be supportive and could find money within the budget to fund such a study, so the recommendation would be to hire a consultant to work with town staff to do that analysis, so.
Okay, Peter, any particular thoughts on that?
Yeah, I noted that that discussion was recorded in the minutes that we'll look at later in the meeting, and I think this is a terrific idea, and appreciate the late work Jean has done, and the support of the town manager to do the study. Just two questions. One, was our discussion last week on water and sewer, or did it include other elements beyond water and sewer? And two, is there any sense of the speed with which this could be done with a consultant, and when the results could be made available to the public?
I don't have a good sense, Peter. I think a study like this may take six months, but I, we'd have to identify the consultant, get him under contract, and begin up.
Sure, okay. I certainly agree that it's well worth doing, and I think we've heard comments from the public about, you know, cumulative impacts and projections, so, does anyone recall discussion beyond water and sewer?
In terms, I mean, we discussed other items, but in terms of what we wanted to study, or in terms of, I mean, we discussed this, the moratorium language talks about, you know, traffic studies, and police and fire studies, and roadway infrastructure. I think, as Kelly pointed out, we've done a lot of those studies already, in different forms. We've done the housing production study for, you know, for each of the major developments that have come before this Royal Crest proposal, we've done traffic studies. I don't think we talked about having a particular aggregate study other than the water sewer, if that, if that's the question.
And that, later...
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Later tonight, we are going to review the Royal Crest fiscal impact and school capacity studies, so those are somewhat of an aggregate, that include recent developments, with the proposal for Royal Crest added in.
So, my thought is, we try to knock off some of these items, if they haven't been done, kind of, you know, one at a time, it seems taking up, one, a lot of them have already been done, some of them aren't probably necessary, but it seems like the board's sense was the water sewer is something that is worthwhile, and the town seems to agree, and so it looks like we're going to start to move forward with that as a town, which I think is, if that's the only thing that comes out of this building moratorium, I think that's, that's probably a good, a good start.
Eton, should we have a motion on that from the board to support this study, or is that not, not suggested? I mean, I'm just, you know, it's really a two-part question, is it required? I don't know, but, you know, we've got the planning department and the town manager supporting this, and I'm just wondering if the planning board could have an expression of support for doing this.
So, it's certainly not required, but I don't see anything wrong with putting together a, a statement from the board of our approval or desire to see something like this occur, and that we've considered, you know, this issue has been brought before us, and, you know, we can vote on the building moratorium, but separate and apart, we think that this would be a good idea for the town to take up. So, I think we can maybe come up with some language and have a vote on that, once we have some language together.
Okay, or I could suggest that, I could suggest a motion that the board supports the town conducting a study on water and sewer.
Yes, but I, before we make a motion on it, I'd like it to be, I'd like it to be something that, one, is on an agenda specifically, and, two, that we actually have language that we're voting on.
Okay.
So, let's put that together. And, yeah, it's not something that's going to, obviously, we can't compel the town to do this, but something that the planning board is saying that this is what we support. Okay, all right, does any members of the board have any additional comments about the building moratorium? Seeing none, we will continue it until May 18th, and at that point, I would anticipate probably taking a vote on whether the planning board would be recommending favorable action or not favorable action on this, so that that can go to the board of selectmen, and they can vote, and so it can go to town meeting with our recommendation. So, if any members of the public, any applicants, any board members have any further comments, let's have those before the next meeting, please. Okay. Okay, moving on, now we will go to Three Grape Pond Road, Elaine Finbury, application for a site plan review special permit under Article 8, Part 3, and Article 10, 195, 10.7 of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. The applicant proposes to creative reuse and conversion of the Grange Hall in the old center to three residential units, construction of retaining walls, stormwater management, and creation of associated parking spaces. No exterior alterations are proposed. The parcel is located within the R3 zoning district. I'm noting that Kelly has recused herself from this, as she is a member of the Historical Society, who is the current owner of the building. Okay, so, let us hear, I believe, from Attorney Cafrey.
Good evening, I don't know if everyone else had a problem with the audio at the end there, but the, my name is Andrew Cafrey, I'm representing Laney Finbury, who's the developer of this proposal, she's on the screen now, under the, over the name of Kenneth Lindauer. We also have Tony Cappacetti from Hayes Engineering, who is the engineer on the project. The first question that comes to mind is what you were just discussing, and I wonder whether the word "construction" also includes renovation of three or more units, because what we're proposing is the renovation of a building into three units, and I'm, I just wonder whether that proposal that you're just speaking about would prohibit this, or whether you're talking about construction, new construction. So, with that, with that said, since our last meeting, I believe that Mr. Cappacetti has gotten filed with the, with Ms. Enright and the, and the planning board, the necessary files and so forth, plans that need to be done for this. As we discussed at the last meeting, where it was substantive, we believe we have addressed most of the concerns of the planning board. As you recall, the zoning board has granted two variances for the width of the driveway and the, I think the location of the parking. But other than that, we think we're basically in compliance, and that the special permit is something that should be allowed by the planning board. We still have to go before the Conservation Commission, which is scheduled, I believe, in another week or two. Mr. Cappacetti will address that. With the historic, we have to get approval of the historic district commission. So, with what has been filed, we're happy to address any questions that the board may have with the recent filings.
Okay, is, can people hear? I saw Kelly had raised her hand, is the hearing okay right now?
It is now.
Okay, to answer your question, to answer your question, yes, your, this project could be impacted if that moratorium were to pass, however, we've gotten an outside council opinion that any projects that have already been granted a special permit would likely survive any potential moratorium. So, if we're done with this project, and a permit is granted before town meeting, then you should not have any, you most likely will not have any concern, but that, that's, there are no guarantees, and that's one of the reasons, one of the things we brought up in discussing that project was, it shouldn't, the moratorium shouldn't, I don't think it was designed to affect your project, but it could, which was one of the concerns I had with the language.
Thank you.
So, but we'll, we'll continue as if yours would survive, and go forward from there. So...
So, I would just add...
Jean, yes.
That that opinion letter, Attorney Cafrey, is in the packet, it is linked to the housing moratorium. I'm not so sure it would apply to a building permit for this project, but the, the outside council opinion letter, if you go to our agenda and click on the citizen petition moratorium article, you'll see there's an opinion letter from an outside council, so I would suggest that you look at that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'll just hop in, I did ask some subsequent questions in response to the opinion, I did just send them to you and Jean, so that you have them. It may... I did just send them to you and Jean so that you have them. It may further clarify this proponent, but we can get into that later if you want.
Okay.
As for this application, I did receive revised plans that addressed all of my concerns. A revised cover sheet came in today, which was added to the packet that clarified some items waiver request and what the ZBA has approved. The town engineer did submit comments related to stormwater. A response was provided, I think, last Thursday that I've sent to him, but I have not heard back from him yet. And those are the only outstanding comments. Conservation Commission meets next Wednesday, and I would have recommended anyways that the board keep this open until we get a sense from the conservation, because they, they have a fairly big ask of the conservation commission. And so things might get revised next Wednesday or proposed to be revised. And so I want, I think the plan would just be cleaner the next time we meet. I could still, based on my sense of the conservation commission, draft a decision potentially and then, you know, talk about if, if there were significant changes or not.
And I saw a comment from the post office that they're okay with the building number and getting their postal carrier through. Can you just remind us what, either Jean or Attorney Cafrey, what the parking plans or Tony, what the parking plans are now?
Yeah, so we're going to provide two spaces per, per unit for a total of six spaces. We found out after going to the zoning board of appeals that we had, the purchase and sales included the business zone parcel adjacent to this parcel, which allowed us to configure the parking lot to be as compliant as possible. We did obtain a variance for the width as it gets closer to the building. Minimum width is 25 feet under zoning, however, where it's an existing historical structure. We couldn't move the structure and it's a low-use residential structure. The, the zoning board of appeals agreed and granted that variance. Otherwise, we're compliant with setbacks to the parking surfacing. It's going to be a paved parking lot. And we're providing stormwater management for, for the minor increase in impervious area.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? Okay. So Jean, if we could try to have a draft decision to the extent that you get the sense from conservation that plans are solid, I think that would be great. And I would just say, I think we just need to, this is the first one, at least recently, on their, their reuse.
It's the first one that I've encountered.
On the reuse. So I think we just need to make sure we go back to the language of the bylaw to make sure we have findings of fact for the specific requirements for the reuse.
So the big finding of fact is it's aligned with the master plan. And if you remember, my staff report at the beginning laid out the case there. And there's a requirement for the contiguous building, buildable area, I'm sorry, the pervious area to remain at at least 30% or the, or the inverse of that. And so that, that is now shown on the cover sheet. So.
Yeah, I mean, it, I think you set it up nicely and frankly, this is, I think, like the exact type of project that this bylaw was, was meant for, to keep historic structure, but make it be able to used in a more modern day way. So I think it fits nicely. I just want to make sure we have everything lined up so that when we have future projects, we have a good template to go back to to say, okay, this is kind of the kind of things we're looking for. This is how the decision looks and, you know, model accordingly. Okay. So let's, so good luck with the conservation commission and then we'll see you back here in, in two weeks.
I think it's longer than that, isn't it?
No, May 18th.
Oh, great. Thank you very much, particularly for the continuances you granted us over the months.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Moving right along. Royal Crest Estates, 128 Royal Crest Drive, Trinity Financial. Jim Keith proposed master redevelopment plan for the property. All right. So, good evening, everyone. So why don't we start with, Jean, why don't you tell us, why don't we do, why don't we do a little summary of what we're doing tonight, who we have here, who we expect to hear from? Then let's go to Merrimack College. Then depending on time, we can either go through comments or we can go to the fiscal impact. I know depending on whether or not Ms. Barrett is available. If she's not here yet.
So I have an update on that. So she is available.
Okay, great.
And I anticipate she'll be joining just a little before eight.
Okay.
Which all should line up. So as far as who's here, we have Jeff Doggett from Merrimack College. As you know, there's been several questions have come before the board in the, I think it's 49-page document now that we've been reviewing. And so Jeff has had access to that document and he can speak to just the overall operation that Merrimack foresees on this project. We also have peer reviewers for both the proponents as well as the town for both the fiscal impact and the school capacity study. So I would suggest take the fiscal impact first, run through that, get all the input. And then as a separate agenda, take the school capacity analysis. There are different peer reviewers from the town for each of those.
Great.
And then Ben comments after that, I would suggest, because we got to the vast.
Yeah, we got to the vast majority. Most of them. So even if we don't get to all those comments tonight, we can take them up with fiscal impact at the next time if we, depending on the timing. Okay.
I will say, one has already come in. So at some point, when you're ready, we can go over that.
Okay. Well, let's get to work. So let's talk Merrimack College. So do we have Jeff on the line?
Hope so. He was.
I don't see him.
Melissa, are you reaching out to him? Yeah, okay. We'll give him one minute.
All right.
From the last week's meeting, one note that I have is you wanted to ensure that there's no balconies on the backside of the dorms, just in case you want to cover that tonight.
Okay. So how's everyone doing tonight? I think we're moving along.
Not too bad.
I was saying earlier, I went through Boston today and today was the first time in a year that I hit traffic.
Really?
I came to a standstill in Somerville. And I was like, ah, back to normal. And then it took me 30 minutes to get to Watertown from there.
Yeah, we went to the, I mean, we went away for the weekend and Friday afternoon went to the airport. The traffic was pretty heavy at spots. I mean, it wasn't quite as bad as in rural Friday afternoon, but it was close. Yeah.
Someone else I knew was in Nashville this weekend. I looked busy there.
It was, yeah, there's a lot of traffic there. It's a hot warmer down there. It's like the perfect time of year down there.
Do you want to do the minutes?
Sure. All right. Let's go to minutes. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 27, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by John. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Peter. All in favor, we'll start with Aaron.
Yes.
Peter.
I'm.
Kate.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right. I don't want to jump in and out of comments. Like I thought about going to comments, but I don't want to jump in and out.
Do you want to do the comment that I received?
Sure, sure. You received a new comment?
Yep.
Okay.
So the comment is from Kevin Doobie, received at 6:33, one hour ago. Hello, I have significant concerns regarding the Royal Crest project being proposed. Quite simply, it is far too large. It will simply add far too much traffic to the area that is already congested. Between the extra cars and the extra crossings of students, it simply doesn't make sense for our town. I also believe the moratorium is a good idea so that we can take some time to establish what we want the future of our town to look like. Explore the options available to us and map out exactly what we should expect in the next 10, 15, 20 years.
Okay. Double comments. Can we talk about the balloon test?
Sure. So I, everybody should have received an email. I think I have responses from almost everyone. We've targeted Tuesday, May 25th at 6:00 PM for the balloon test. It would be a site visit. We spoke a little earlier today. I suggested that if they could get put up a few days before that, the board would have opportunity to drive around the general area with different view angles. I know Aaron has been interested in the view angle coming from the bypass and obviously the, the neighborhoods surrounding the project.
So I'll put this to Michael Lozano of Can We Do That? Because I think we're getting to a point now where we're going to go over the financials tonight. We've talked about building heights and we've talked about numbers of people, students, new residents, retail. And I think it's time to really start putting these things together. And then we're going to get to a bunch of the other details, you know, walking paths and fences and lighting that we've kind of hit on a little bit and we're going to kind of drain, you know, get down to some of the more details. But I think to really move this forward, we need to get a sense of how big this is. How tall is it? How, what are the comparisons? And also the numbers so that we can share our concerns or our lack of concerns with, as a board, with the applicant and let them either come back to us with, yeah, okay, we'll reduce it or not reduce it and, you know, make their pitch in there, what they think is appropriate. But I think we need to get to a point where we can tell them what we think. But I don't think we can do that until we do get the numbers and talk about them, which we're doing tonight, and until we get this balloon test. So to really get a sense of the heights. So I would really, really love to get that done this month. So with all that being said, can we do it?
We, we understand and are in complete agreement. We'd like to, we'd like to get this done in order for the board to get a better sense of, of the heights and setbacks that we're talking about. So I'm working with, I'm working with the team now in order to, to set that up and line it up for May 25th. I don't have that yet confirmed, but I will, I, I can assure you that we will endeavor to make that happen.
Okay. When, can you tell me when we'll, we'll know? Because once we get into June, then we're talking about town meeting and, and summer vacations and stuff like that. So, you know, if we can, if it's not going to happen May 25th and we need to do later that week or early the next week. I mean, I prefer May 25th because we all know that we can do it.
Yeah.
But really, if you can tell us within a week, either yes or no. If it's not going to be. Okay. All right. Tell us within a week. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Melissa, any word on our friends at Merrimack?
No, I sent out a message, but I haven't heard back yet. I will try another avenue.
Okay. So why don't we do some, read some comments then?
Okay. We're trying to reach out to Judy Barrett to get her on the call so that we can get going on the fiscal impact.
Okay.
As soon as possible. But if you want to take.
We'll read a couple.
Couple, that is fine.
Yep. Which document should I be reading from?
Summary, general comments.
Hold on. Hold on, I think I got to go there.
The folder.
Hold on, I think I got to go to a different folder. Hold on, it's like, oh, it's still on. Our Royal Crest. I hope everyone at home enjoys me talking to myself. Resident comments.
So Judy will be on in three minutes.
Oh.
So I think we stopped at the bottom of page 35 with Jim Salvatore.
Okay. I found it. Okay, great. Okay. So we're reading Jim Salv, reading Jim Salvatore's comments? Okay. Jim Salvatore, this is page 35 of 210427, Summary, General Public Comments. Good morning, Jean. I'm a North Andover resident. I moved to North Andover in 2014 because it was a quiet town with good schools and I felt safe. I am extremely concerned with the Royal Crest redevelopment plan and the negative impacts it will have on our town. Sorry, Ben, before I continue with Mr. Salvatore's comments, just two comments that I need to make. One, we're going to skip any comments about fiscal impacts because we're going to come back to those after we talk about it. And two, just so, just so everyone's clear, I'm, right now, I am reading comments that have come in that are part of the public record as to this. They're not my opinions or the opinions of the board. They're not fact-checked. They are just what people have submitted and we're reading them all. Sometimes we'll be discussing them and we'll be getting comments about them, but the actual comments that have come in, I'm, I'm just reading, just, just so people know that. All right. Utilities. We have always, we always have issues with losing power, more so than any town I've ever lived in. We have, we had the major gas issue exposing our existing infrastructure. Adding more only puts a strain on this as well as water supply and more carbon emissions and sewerage. A response that was provided by Trinity Aimco. A preliminary analysis conducted by our engineers in conjunction with the local and regional utilities has indicated that there is sufficient water, sewer, gas and electrical capacity to support the new Royal Crest. Our plans call for the complete redesign and rebuilding of the 50-year-old infrastructure on the site, including utilities. Our engineers and architects are designing our buildings, landscaping and infrastructure to be as sustainable and energy efficient as possible, utilizing the latest in green building technology and adopting enhanced stretch code requirements. When completed, we expect them to be LED certifiable, excuse me, and will be among the most energy efficient in buildings, buildings in the region. Comment, this particular development, developer has been extremely secretive. I have placed eight phone calls and 12 emails requesting more information and I have not received one response. Finding information about this is not very easy unless you want to see the sleek look, looking architectural mockups. For that reason, I am left to question this developer. When the marijuana plant was being built, many opposed it, but they were honest, answered questions and provided plenty of information. Based on my 20 exclamation point attempts to reach out, I can't help but feel they don't want me to know or don't care. These are not the kind of people I want our town to get in business with. Response, we have no record of contact from Mr. Salvatore. Next comment, there is an elementary school about one quarter mile away from the redevelopment site. How would that work during construction? Would my children and other children in this town be having to listen to construction while trying to learn? This is not acceptable. I would need to know what technologies will be purchased by the town for each student at the school to provide sufficient in-room classroom audio that does not existing, the schools now, does not exist in the schools now? I think that's what you should say. There is no voice amplification system for the teachers. The comment back was, at its closest point, our plan will be approximately 500 feet from the Franklin School. We do not expect there to be any impact from construction on the school. That said, when we do construction, each component of the plan, our contractors will be required to adhere to strict construction mitigation plans assured to make sure there is minimal disruption to any of our neighbors. I have much more to say, but I don't want to make this an email version rivaling the length of War and Peace. I understand the financial benefits that this may bring in tax revenue, but quality of life, quality of education, quality of utilities, responsiveness of first responders and most importantly, safety are all at risk here. Please consider my thoughts as a citizen in this town of which you serve. I welcome any feedback from you anytime. All right. Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. Comment from Mary Lou and Donald Schalman.
Jeff has joined.
Okay. This is pretty lengthy, so why don't we, we'll go back, so we'll leave off the comments at 37.
I would just say, one additional comment came in late today that I have put in the packet.
Okay.
It was very late this afternoon though.
Okay. Okay. So let's talk about Merrimack.
All right. So we have, Jeff Doggett has joined the meeting. Jeff, I was saying earlier that you were aware of the list of comments that have been received with Trinity's responses to them. Some of them were applicable to Merrimack. Aton, I don't know if you want to scroll through them or just have a general conversation and Jeff kind of tee up his perspective of Merrimack's role within this proposed development.
Okay. So I think we're having some difficulty with hearings. So why don't we let, why don't we do this? Jeff, why don't you kind of give us, from your perspective, what this project, what Merrimack's involvement is, what the benefits are for Merrimack, what the benefits are for the town from Merrimack's perspective? And then if you have any specific comments that you've heard and can address, great. Otherwise, we'll, we'll go through some, some questions or comments that have come up.
My mic is working. Great. Thank you for the opportunity to come in. My mic is working. Great. Thank you for the opportunity to come in. I'm Jeff Doggett, the Executive Vice President, Chief Financial and Operating Officer here at the college. I'm also a resident of North Andover now for eight years. So I've been at Merrimack College just over 10 years, and part of my role here has been to oversee some of the physical growth of the campus. And we were going through a master plan as part of our growth of probably 2016, 2017. And at that time, I reached out to Aimco, who I did not know very well. The institution was only leasing a few units ourselves for students. We had a lot of students renting directly from them, and tried to engage with them as to what the future of Royal Crest was. Even back then, I knew enough about the development world to see that Royal Crest was a site that was likely to be developed at some point in the future or sold to another developer. And I'd heard enough, being a resident of the town, to know that future development was actually something at that time people were really talking about, that people really felt like that was a place that more could happen. And so I reached out and selfishly for the college, our perspective was, was pretty clear. On the one hand, I did not want to go and build a lot of housing on our campus and then have a developer come in, knock down Royal Crest, and build more attractive housing, and then crush the college. Right? That was sort of step number one here. Step number two was, as an institution that was growing, we felt very, very powerfully that we were an anchor, a financial anchor in this institution, in this community. And, and I define that in the following ways. Most importantly is, is that if there are ways in which we can leverage the strength and the growth of the institution to the benefit of the community, then that's a really good opportunity. And so our going into the first conversations that we had with Aimco, even before there was a Trinity Financial, but even, even before then, our position was pretty simple. We have a number of students that are going to need housing as we continue to grow. Right? If we build housing on our property, right, we would obviously receive all the financial benefit of that. But what could we do and how could we convince Aimco to actually redevelop at least part, if not all, of Royal Crest in a way knowing that they'd have some revenue from our students in terms of rentals, right? And I, I think a better illustrator of that is a hotel, right? As a Division One athletic program, we bring a lot of, of students, a lot of families onto campus, a lot of students and prospective students come onto campus and they look at the college about whether they're going to attend here through accepted student days and tours and things like that. You add homecoming. If, if we felt that we had sufficient ability to run an entire hotel all on our own, we probably would try to, sought to build one, right? We don't, but we do provide enough financial opportunity that if one were to be built closer to the campus, that we really felt that would, that would benefit a community, especially a community that I had heard from many folks was a hotel of, you know, not a huge hotel, but a hotel of some size would actually benefit North Andover. So from our perspective, our earliest approach to this partnership was, how do we leverage the economic strength of the institution and the growth that quite frankly is almost unparalleled in higher education? There aren't a lot of schools that have grown as we have in such a short period of time. And how do we use that to the advantage of, of bringing to the table an opportunity to grow in the development at Royal Crest? And it was, it was from the very basic site, that was where we started. And I give Aimco a lot of credit, both as the institution across the street, but also as, as a resident, that they actually were able to come to the table because they're doing things right now through Trinity that is not really in their, their bailiwick necessarily. So our, our approach has been, from, again, from the very basic level is, that which we need as an institution alone, we could probably figure out how to do on our own campus. But we know and knew early on that if we were to do that, it would actually harm the ability of taking what I think we would all agree as residents is, an aging, uh, piece of property on our, in our town that could be used better, however we all want to define that. But I think we could all figure out a way to make that a better use for the town itself. And so there have been conversations about us having beds, which obviously is in the proposal right now. There was a conversation early on about whether there should be an academic building at, at Royal Crest. We decided that wasn't necessary on our side, but I do know, having seen the, the notes, there were questions about, well, there were earlier conversations about other uses of the college on the property. There were at that time when we were in the conceptual phase. But we really felt the best way to provide the economic strength of the institution to this project was to, to do housing there. We'd already had a number of students housed there. We've got over 500 that, that we, 500 beds for which we, as an institution, rent, and then students are living in our rented units. There's probably another 300 or so more of students that rent all by themselves or on their own. So having a thousand beds over there is, didn't feel like an enormous leap from our standpoint, either in terms of being responsible for filling the beds or overriding the number of, of students that would be there. As a matter of fact, quite frankly, I think it'd be easier for everybody if they were in one location and not spread out next to families all the time. But that's sort of how we, we initially approached this. I, everything that I understand, and I don't claim to know all the nook and crannies of every economic dollar, but I've worked with, I've worked with Trinity on a previous project. It just so happenstance that they ended up doing this one. But 20 or so years ago, I, I did a, a project with them when I was at a previous institution. And I, I know that if they're telling me that, that Merrimack is a key part of the finances of this, and that what we're willing to do to help make sure this project moves forward, I, I take seriously. So they've probably spoken about that in the past, but from our perspective, we recognize that we're not just a thousand beds on this project. We're a key financial ingredient into making this project work.
So can I ask some questions?
Can I ask some questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so right now, you'd say you'd have about 800 students over at Royal Crest? Is that about right?
About right.
About right today, yes.
Okay. And those, what kind of comments do you get from the students there about how things are going over there? And do you also get comments from other residents or complaints about students? How does that work today?
Sure. So, so, yes, all of the above, right? I'll, I'll start with the neighbors first, right? I've been in higher ed a long time. I very rarely get calls from neighbors that say, hey, this is the best thing in the world that I'm living directly next to a, a student, right? So I'll just be honest. I think, having come before your committee in the past, you'll always get straight honesty from me about, about that. I think the difference between a student that's living there today and the complaints that we would get, which are going to be in the student behavior range, noise complaints, you know, there might be a party, is the following. Number one is, when you're interspersing students in a building where there are also other residents, right, just the conflict of that, of those populations will always cause some level of, of, of conflict, right? Some are better, not every student is bad, and not every, not every non-student dislikes having students in their population. What I can say is, is that it's almost universal that when you take students and you put them in the same building with each other, as opposed to interspersed with neighbors, you will end up with less neighbors who are complaining, right? It seems elementary at, at some level, but that, that's just the reality of it. So yes, we do get complaints. Some of those complaints come directly to us. Some of those complaints go to the North Andover Police Department. Sometimes the North Andover Police Department works with us. You know, I, I know the chief well enough to know that he will take every single call very seriously, the chief of North Andover, and, and we do as well. And I know that if someone calls North Andover, North Andover's going to, going to respond. I'm sure that's covered elsewhere, but there are obviously going to be those type of issues. I would argue that there are issues more of those residencies where students are renting directly from Royal Crest as opposed to the units that the college rents, but it's certainly not universal.
How would...
Does that answer your question?
Yep. How would, how are the dorms or how would this proposed dorm be regulated? Do we have, is there security? Do we have RAs? How does that work?
Yeah. So, so a residence hall of this nature would have a series of, of security processes, right, from who can actually get into the facility and how that would be managed. There'd, there'd be staff in the building. There'd probably be staff that live in there that are, that are Merrimack staff. We do that on our own campus. There'd be residence hall directors, residence assistants, things like that. And again, we have some of that at Royal Crest. The difference is that it's all spread out across the property. But if it's in one central location, we would have all of that. And then, as we do today, if there's a, if there is a complaint and it comes to Merrimack College, Merrimack Police Department, Merrimack College Police Department will respond. There are times where someone will complain about a noise complaint on the campus, and they'll call in that to the town, either North Andover or Andover. And then there's, if it's on the campus, then there'll be some cross-collaboration between the, the, the police agencies and figure out how to, how to address it.
Are there any...
And I would imagine some of the, but, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are there any balconies proposed? That was a question we, that came up last time, and I think the board's consensus was that that would probably be a bad idea.
Yeah. I, I think that, um, I think that if, that there were at one point, and, and Jim is leaning in, he may, he may have further comment on that. I think from our perspective, and again, having done projects like this in the past, I think, I think Merrimack's goal is never to be so definitive in the design that we would sit here and, and risk harming such an important project over balconies, right? Because let's be honest, I think any, any one of us, if we lived close enough to that location, the idea of a balcony versus a window would be, would be, at least be a perceived concern. So that's not something that, that we would necessarily jump into in terms of the design.
Okay. There has been, been some discussion and comments that have come in.
If I can interject. Jeff, if you wouldn't mind muting while Aton's asking the question, we get an echo. So I think you guys just have to toggle. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's been some comments that have come in about the financial arrangements. So can you talk about ownership of a potential dorm, management of the potential dorm, whether Merrimack would own or run anything else other than the dorm? And then there's been some concerns, and this is one that I, that I certainly share about, you know, whether or not, if we're, you know, looking towards tax dollars as one of the benefits of this project, and then we have a nonprofit or, or an entity that doesn't pay real estate taxes, are we losing something based on that? And is there another way to kind of make up for those financials? So if you could speak to those kind of, those issues?
Sure. There's a lot there, so let me unpack that just a little bit. The, the first is, is what's the financial model for which this project would be funded? So the college itself would partner with a third party outside of Trinity Financial or Aimco that does housing projects all over the country. There are some firms that do that along the way. So it would be an arrangement between the college and, and that entity. It's a, a group that we've already had conversations with. So if there was an unfortunate scenario by which the, right, Royal Crest does not go forward, we would probably still partner with them to build the beds elsewhere. But they, they would be the entity, and then what would happen over time is there'd be then a lease between the institution and that group, or, or directly with the students, but through us. And then ultimately, over time, that entity would, would transition ownership of the facility over to the college. As it relates to the, that, that entity is itself a nonprofit. It's just an entity that, that does housing for, for institutions. So it would switch from one nonprofit to another. And then in terms of, of the, the impact on, on, on potential tax revenue, I, I would just say this, and I, I have had a conversation with Melissa about this. I, I, I want to make two statements. They, they might seem to be in odds with each other, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear up front that they're, they're not. In our view, there are two things that are true. The first is, is that Merrimack College will end up paying a premium to build a thousand beds at Royal Crest compared to if it did it on its own campus. And we would do that because we believe that something at Royal Crest, specifically this project, but whatever it ends up with, but, but this project, not just Merrimack's dorm, but the opportunity for this town to have retail and a hotel and other, other means, the opportunity to, to address a good portion of the 40B issue and all the rest, we think is worth it. That's how we're, that's how we're making our economic impact on this project. Having said that, I don't think, and I don't think the college thinks, that building a thousand beds, whether it's on Royal Crest's property or necessarily on ours or at any other property that we might be able to do, wouldn't have some impact on the resources of North Andover. Some would be positive, right? Whether that's all the things that are in this list and water and sewer and everything like that. And some may be problematic, right? Like, you know, having more cruisers or additional fire truck or things like that. And so I've already indicated to the town manager that if, if there's a point in time where that's a conversation that needs to be had, Merrimack was always willing to engage in that type of, of conversation because we just think it makes sense, right? I don't, I don't want our growth to then cause a problem for the town in terms of its resources. So that, that's where we stand at the moment.
Okay. So that's fair. I mean, it, it's just, I mean, it's something that I, I know that I've commented on a couple of times at different meetings. You haven't been here for that. But it, it, you know, anytime a nonprofit or a college grows, it does have some real good benefits for the town. It is a, something that brings in, you know, people that are spending money in town, going to restaurants, making the town known more widely, whether it's through sports or academics. So it does have those benefits. But any property that nonprofits own that aren't taxed, not only is it services that are from the town that are being provided, but also that's property off the tax rolls that we can't tax. So I, I do think that there is a responsibility there from the college that, with the growth and the things that they provide, to also recognize that and have a good conversation. Everywhere that I've worked or seen, you know, there are different agreements between various colleges in different ways. So I would, I think that's going to be important to the town, especially at a town meeting, to kind of hear information that that's at least moving forward, because I think people have been wanting something like that outside of the Royal Crest situation just for a long time. So I think it would certainly help, help in this regard. Okay. I'm trying to think if there were other comments or questions that I could think of off the top of my head. Why don't we go to other board members to see if they have other things that have come up that they can think of, or Jean, or anyone else have anything they want to jump in on?
Just one question. I, I know earlier in your comments, you made the point of the, the synergy in, of particularly having a hotel where it would benefit the community as well as the college. I suspect you could make the same argument for some of the retail that's attached to it. But do you, do you see it more broadly? For example, what's the, the win-win for Merrimack because of, like, office buildings where, you know, over 55 housing? I mean, what's the, or are you looking at primarily through the filter of, of just the, the hotel?
Thank you for the question. It, it gives me an opportunity to come back to where I started, so I appreciate that. So I, for Merrimack College, there are two things that are, that are really, really important, right? The, the first is, is that we actually want to be part of a community that is doing well. It's thriving, right? We, I, I recognize, just having read 48 pages of commentary, that there'll be residents that have different opinions as to what makes a, a community thrive. But from, from our perspective, a community that's thriving is one that has... perspective, um, a community that's thriving is one that has, uh, an ability to solve, you know, many of the things that are important to us. And so while there's no direct impact to Merrimack as it relates to having, um, 55-plus housing, um, you know, or quite frankly, it doesn't directly impact Merrimack College to necessarily have, um, the 40B, um, um, housing situation be addressed the way that it is in this project. It is true that a thriving North Andover is good for Merrimack, just as I believe, although it's often difficult to quantify, that a growing and thriving Merrimack is ultimately good for North Andover. How one actually articulates that to every individual, I think, is, is more difficult. But I believe that the synergy, I like, like that word, I think that's the right word, right? We, we all depend on, on each other. And so, so Merrimack's position here on the whole project is, is that if the town is happy about, about all the options in it, then great, we're happy to be able to leverage our economic strength to help that. If the, if the town came back and said, "The last thing we want is," and I'll, I'll make this up, right? "The last thing that, that, that we want is the plus 55 housing because we want something else." Okay, I, I would understand that. I mean, that's not, that's not kind of where we sit. Having said that, there are, I would call there are indirect things that, in this project that we would benefit from, right? Having, having more retail, whether it's restaurants or a store or anything like that, that would be, um, usable both as a resident of the, of the town, but then having all students and faculty and staff be able to go to it. I do think that's a benefit to the institution, right? It does make it feel more like a, a community where they're not going, um, you know, out of North Andover, um, quite frankly, living in, in North Andover. I'll get myself in trouble, but I wouldn't mind having more in North Andover, um, that's more in competition than what's going on in Andover. So I think that those just all benefit from it. But again, from Merrimack's perspective, we sort of looked at this in, in a, a sort of blanket and said, "We, we have a absolute housing need," right? How do we use that need to benefit not just Merrimack, but how do we use that need to leverage something that's a, a better opportunity for the broader community? And, and I've said it before, I've said it to the prior town manager, I've said it to this town manager, right? If in the ultimate wisdom, it's decided that this isn't a project that needs Merrimack College, we have the ability to, to go do what we need to do and continue to thrive as an institution. I just would want to make sure that the town can do so as well. But again, from everything I've heard, that, that becomes a financial issue for the project, and I'd hate to see that part fall apart. So, but I, I actually feel good about where the project is overall, because I think it makes, it, it checks a lot of boxes, obviously. And I think we're pleased that we're able to indirectly, uh, assist with that. Does that answer your question? If it does, I'm more than happy to-
No, that's fine.
No, that's fine.
So question I had, one of the, a couple of the complaints or items of concern that have been raised are the size of the project, numbers of people, the heights of buildings, and, um, locations of certain buildings. So, uh, how committed is Merrimack to the current proposal of you need a thousand beds, it needs to be a certain height, and it needs to be in the location where it is? So, yeah, I mean, just, I'll ask that question.
It's a great question. It's, it's, it's the one that, um, if you're watching the, the screen, right, Mike and Jim, right, they would, they would say, "This is, this is the crux." And, and so, you've asked a political question, which is part totally fine, I'm going to give a political answer back, well, um, which is the one I've, I've given to the town. Merrimack College needs a thousand beds. But Merrimack College believes this is a project that should move forward, right? And so, I'm not the full developer of this project, so if this came down to, if literally what was the difference between this project passing or not and making everybody happy was the balconies had to be changed, the color of the building had to be changed, the front door had to be moved, the, that had to be four stories, not five? Anything is, is open. I think the hardest part about doing a project like this, if I could speak for Trinity, um, for a second, would be, um, is how does it all come together at the end of the day, right? Because with everything that, that adjusts, there are impacts to it, right? We could cut off a floor of the building and build less beds, it would have a financial impact, it may mean less of a, I won't, I, I, subsidy's not the right word, but for the purposes of this meeting, let's call it that, right? It may have an impact on that, because I would then have to go build 200 beds somewhere else on my campus, which we could do, um, but it would have an impact. So, so if you're asking Merrimack specifically, is the building the right shape, the right size, the right location? My immediate answer would be, it's certainly our preference, but I would, I, I would loathe to put Merrimack in a position of bringing down the entire project simply because of our preference, right? The ultimate goal here for Merrimack is to achieve its housing needs and to see something new and exciting that benefits not just Merrimack, but the entire town in North Andover at Royal Crest.
Okay. And, and I think that's a fine answer, and I get what you're saying about it being a political question, but it really is a realistic question, and we're going to ask the same question of Trinity. And we're gonna, at some point as a board, make recommendations about what we think is the proper size and scope, and we need to know, you know, if we think, as we've heard from people, uh, in the community, that, that, that cuts need to be made, you know, in terms of size or scope or numbers, we need to know what's on the table. So that's, and we're going to ask the same question about 40B, and we're going to ask the same question about over 55, and then we're going to decide what we think, and then ultimately, you know, um, you know, the proponents can decide what they think, but that, that's why I asked the question. You just happen to be the first person I'm, that we're asking it to, okay?
Well, I, and I, I appreciate it, and so I just want to make, make sure that, that I'm clear. If, if I wasn't, then I apologize if this is repetitive.
No, that was good.
No, that was good. I mean, we, we, we honestly believe and, and have believed, as the person that first reached out to Aimco, if there's anyone to blame, right, I'll take the blame years ago, but I think at the end of the day, we have always believed that the, that Royal Crest as a location can be so much more for North Andover. And how we all get there, um, and what it all looks like in the end, I think is, is broader than what Jim Keith and Jeff Doggett think. So I appreciate your, your comment, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think we look forward to that, and, and we're open to whatever it takes to, to make it work, and, um, you know, and, and, you know, I'm happy to be involved in that or not involved with that as the town would like.
Other members of the board, Kate, any comments? Or she, is Kate recused from?
Kate is recused.
Kate is recused. Aaron, any questions, comments for Merrimack?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Peter, any questions or comments?
Yes, um, how important is the mixed-use, the retail area in the proposal for Merrimack?
So is it direct use, the retail component, isn't something that's, um, that's of great importance to us? And I, I read some of the comments, and I've talked to neighbors, um, you know, in, in the town, and I know that, or at least I've heard that there is a, a concern or suggestion that the retail will eventually all become Merrimack's over time, whether that's a shell game or just where things might likely fall out. I, I would just say, um, if that was the intent of the question, there was a time where we could have just had an academic building on the site, um, we didn't feel that was necessary. So the retail wasn't, or i- isn't an attempt to have retail necessarily for us exclusively. Indirectly, I think the retail is important, it just, again, as both the college and then as a resident of the town, that opportunity to have more restaurants and more stores, um, I think would be really great. I don't, I don't necessarily agree it's all in competition with what exists today, um, in, in the town, but I do think that more would be great, and quite frankly, we have a lot of students that go to restaurants and they travel outside the limits of North Andover, um, to do so. And I would, I would love to be able to leverage their economic strength and have something very successful as part of this project.
Kelly, any questions or comments?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, I think, um, I think that, I think that you've answered really all of our questions or comments. At some point, we'll go back and hit some of the resident comments, um, that, um, have come in about Merrimack, but I, as far as I can tell, you've answered the questions that we have. We may come back and ask you to come back in at some point later on as we move further along in the process, but thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm happy to come back anytime the committee would like, appreciate it.
Great.
Great.
Okay, so why don't we now, are we ready, Gene, to move on to the fiscal impact?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we'll hear first from, um, Trinity and their analyst. Then I want to hear from our, uh, peer review consultant, and then I think we'll go to board questions or comments, but I'd like to hear from both before we jump in with questions or comments. I, I mean, if something's urgent, then, then come up, but let's, let's, I'd like to hear from both if we can first before we jump in.
Do you want to introduce Mark?
Yeah, so, uh, this is Mike Lozano from Trinity Financial. We have here tonight, uh, Mark Fugere, uh, of Mark Fugere Planning, um, who is a very experienced, um, fiscal consultant, and he will, um, he, he has prepared a very extensive and well-considered, um, report on both the fiscal impacts and the benefits of, of our proposal. So I'll turn it over to Mark to go through the specifics of the report, and we're available for any questions that arise from that.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Gene, are you going to put up the, are you driving the PowerPoint?
Yep. Hold on one second.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you, uh, my name is Mark Fugere. As noted, um, I run a consulting company, Fugere Planning Development, which provides services to, uh, municipal and, and private sector clients. I've been a planner, um, since the mid-eighties. I have a master's degree in planning. I was a municipal planner for over 10 years, and, um, have been in private sector for the last 20, just to lay a background. You go to the next slide, please?
Can we just identify the document? Since, since people are watching at home, can we identify the document that we're looking at, please?
So, Mark, sorry to interrupt, but the-
The PowerPoint?
Yep, so the file name is 210503, Proponents Fiscal Impact Presentation-5 dot 3 dot 21 dot PDF.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. So, we've been, uh, working on this for quite some time, and there's been significant input, um, and interaction with town staff, which is, which is critical if you're going to have a successful fiscal impact report. We've worked with the town manager, the director of community development and economic development, uh, both the police and fire chiefs, school superintendent along with the assistant, uh, chief assessor, um, many other department heads in the community services, and Barrett Planning Group, Judy Barrett, who, uh, I've known, uh, for many years. It's been a long process, we've been working on it for about a year now. And just a little bit of background of, of what a fiscal impact, uh, report is, um, this, this analysis you're going to see right now is, is just, uh, a tip of, uh, of the analysis that was completed. Obviously, the report's very long and complicated, and, um, we're not going to get into every nook and cranny of it, but if you have any questions or follow-ups after I'm done, I'd be happy to address it. So the purpose of the fiscal impact report is to look at not only the income that are going to come in from a project with different revenue sources, but also what the costs and impacts may happen to various town departments. Um, and there's a couple of different ways you can look at that. One's called a marginal cost approach, where you look at, um, interviews with specific department heads, um, you know, you have discussions with them as far as what type of impacts may occur to them, what are their capacity limits, what troubles are they dealing with, and what type of staffing needs they personally have and may be impacted by the development. There's also the average cost approach, where it's a little simple, simplified version of that, where you might take the town's, uh, operating budget divided by the town's population and come up with a cost per person, uh, as an example. So in this particular analysis, we looked at both. Sometimes, uh, department heads are uncomfortable coming up with a, a cost, uh, so we go to a cost averaging. I'm getting some feedback here, so I apologize, um, bouncing around. So the existing site, I think, is well-known in the community. It's a dated apartment complex, there's 588 units there, uh, it's 482 bedroom units and 108 three-bedroom units. I can tell you that today, that's a very unusual mix. There are no studios, no, no one beds. You don't find apartment complexes like this anymore. It's, uh, it really shows, uh, the age of the facility. Presently, there are 213 school-aged children that reside in the property, um, that go to area schools. On an annual basis, it's approximately 512 police calls to the site, and fire and ambulance, uh, go there approximately 143 times a year. As stated earlier, Merrimack Colleges have a relationship with their present owner, and 115 units of that, uh, development are leased to the school. Next slide, thank you. So, as, as we all know, this is a, a large mixed-use project and involves many different components. There's student housing, there's apartments, uh, there's age-restricted housing, there's going to be 263 townhomes, um, a small retail component of 73,000 square feet, a hotel, and office space. Working with the assessing office, um, and looking at comparable properties in the community or nearby, um, we came up with an estimated value of these, uh, new additional land uses, approximately 480 million dollars, uh, which is, we expect is going to generate over $7 million in property taxes. And these, again, were taken from, uh, properties in the neighborhood or, or in the region, uh, to, to back up. Uh, obviously, these properties are, are reviewed by the local assessing office. Typically, they look at the income approach for those properties, so I think they give a sound, uh, idea of what the marketplace is like, what values exist in the neighborhood, um, and I think they're very supportable, and the town assessor did review my findings and found them acceptable.
Can I ask a question?
There's going to be some-
Can I just ask a quick question? So the property taxes and excise taxes, that's literally when this project as proposed is fully built out, what we would expect for property taxes and excise taxes? It's not a comparison number with anything that's just as, as proposed, these are the numbers, correct?
Correct, yes, I was going to get to that, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is at buildup, yep, at buildup. Within my report, there is a phasing plan that sort of breaks up these, uh, values and costs to give an idea of the time. Obviously, uh, this project's not going to be built overnight, um, it's going to be over an eight-to-10-year period, but this is if, um, as if it was dropped out of the sky today, uh, and was fully developed, uh, these are the revenues that we're, we're expecting. So the, uh, the other revenue streams that we're, we're looking at is, um, the 3% CPA surcharge, the community has, uh, personal property, uh, from restaurants, uh, there is a possibility of additional revenue on personal property, um, which we didn't include, which, uh, may come from the hotel, and also from office space, um, depending on the type of office, usually you may have personal property that can be taxed there. Uh, meals taxes from the restaurants, uh, it's, it's just noted, the vehicle excise taxes, and, um, North Andover has a, uh, hotel tax provision, so you would get some revenue from that. So all told, uh, the gross revenue we're estimating, uh, for the development is 8.4 million, uh, dollars. Go to the next slide, please. So that looks at, obviously, the total revenues, um, and now we get into expected costs. Police and fire, uh, we spend a significant amount of time with, um, looking at, uh, call data from compatible properties. That's a key metric that I use to, um, try to, to estimate what type of impact, uh, a new land use will have on a community. will have on a community. It's usually well-received by police and fire chiefs, and that's what we used here. We went through a number of different iterations of calls of their locations, other types of land uses in the community. Ms. Barrett was involved in some of that decision-making along with the town manager. At the end of the day, given the size of the project, the police chief and the fire chief weren't comfortable in estimating what the project may be. There's anxiety from both of them as far as, you know, what the actual numbers will be. Obviously, it's gonna be done over time, and also, you know, we believe the money's gonna be there and available for the chiefs to use, but that's not a decision up to them. Ultimately, that's gonna be a board selectment, town manager decision, and the voters of the community to support extra staff if they need it. So based on our discussions, I made a best-guess estimate of potential impacts of, in both departments, of between two and four staff members, which would range in cost between $248,000 and $480,000. On the police side, we're expecting an additional 667 police calls to the property, and on the fire side, 360 calls. Just to put that into perspective, the police department currently responds to over 22,000 calls a year at this time, and the fire department responds to over 4,700 calls per year at this time. So, I think we've been conservative here with expected costs. This will be something that will be looked at. I believe Ms. Barrett will be looking at, try to find some more compatible, comparable data from like communities, but I think we have a good range of costs here to deal with the police and fire department going forward. We also met with a number, and chatted with a number of other different departments, including elder services, library, veterans affairs, youth center, and community support at the suggestion of the town manager, and we've tried to allocate costs on an average cost basis for those different users, again, with ranges depending on what might happen. School impact, which is always a concern and is focused in on. Again, we had long discussions with the superintendent and follow-up discussions on a number of occasions with the assistant superintendent on schools. As noted, we met with, there are approximately 213 existing students there. The town ended up hiring a consultant to provide additional guidance on potential school impacts. Ms. Barrett also brought in some ideas, and we came up with a range of new students on top of what's there today, which is 213, of anywhere of a range of between 46 and 126 new students that will be in this development. And I think, you know, the people sometimes misconstrue about residential development as every apartment and every unit's gonna have this huge number of kids, but as doing this for a long time, you really, when you look at the numbers, they're never that great. We have an existing 41B development in town that we used as an example, a live example that's brand-new to give an idea of what type of impact may occur. This is also a mixed-use development, and in my experience, some of the newer mixed-use developments that we are seeing in the region do have a lower threshold of children than you would typically see. But to be conservative and to provide for good planning, we do have a range of students that we're expecting, so the town can decide what way to go. Obviously, as the project builds out, you'll have a better understanding of what those impacts are. The school department has undertaken a study of capacity that is ongoing right now. They're doing some survey work, they've engaged some consultants, and they'll be looking at the capacity of their schools moving forward. These costs include costs, again, for a range, including new teachers mainly at the elementary school, that would be where the new teachers would be needed. This includes special ed costs, LEP costs, supply costs, and technical school tuition costs. So again, it's a range of between $510,000 and $896,000. All told, costs could range from $927,000 to just over $2 million, showing a net positive fiscal impact ranging from $6.4 to $7.5 million. That lower range, just for some context, for example, the police budget, the fire budget, the DPW budget, $5 million. So this net funds could actually fund those entire budgets individually, just to give you some idea of how that relates.
Okay, Mark, hold on. Hold on for a second. Hold on, hold on, hold on for a second. John, did you have something you wanted?
At this point, oh wait, I've got a lot of questions about these numbers, but maybe-
Well, yeah, why don't we wait? I just had one question about the numbers, just, I just wanna make sure we're clear on what we're talking about. These ones are, this is comparisons, right? So this is new police calls, new fire calls, as compared to what's currently, new use of elder services, new use of library, youth center, schools. This is all, these are all comparisons, correct?
Yeah, these are additional costs, again, at build-out, if this project is fully built out as proposed. These are the cost ranges that we foresee on the community that can range, you know, basically between $920,000 and $2 million.
So one to two million of new costs you're estimating?
Of new costs, exactly.
So, Aton, can I ask that question another way? Because I had what I think is the same question. I just wanna be clear what we're talking about.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, let's just take one of these examples, I don't know, schools. This is based on the projected number of kids beyond the current number of kids. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what did you say the current number of schoolkids were?
213.
And what is the projected increase in schoolkids?
We're estimating a range of between 46 and 126.
And so, these numbers are only addressing, so that's 46 and 126 in addition to the 213 would be the total number?
Yeah.
And this is just addressing the 46 to 126?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Aton, I think it's a very good question. I'm glad you asked it. These are not the cost to the town. This is only the delta, the increase in costs.
Well, right, but I mean, I think, to me, that's what's important, is the delta. And again, so I'm gonna get back to that later because I think we need to make sure-
Okay, let me ask one other question then, because I agree with your point. So that was very helpful, Mark, to clarify for me what these numbers are. This is just the delta. But what about the gross projected revenue?
So, yeah, so Peter, I was gonna get there later, yeah. Hold on, let's, I have that same question.
It ties into this, so I do like to ask you. This projected revenue, this is projected revenue based on grand total revenue, or, I mean, I don't see how it could be anything other than grand total. This is not a delta revenue, right?
Correct.
Oh, it's total.
That's what I asked, that's what I asked earlier, because if we look at, if we come down to, I think it's on the next slide. Do you wanna go to the next slide?
Well, the next slide, it's the final slide, the next slide, so-
Right, but this last slide says property taxes increase from 1.2 million to 7.1 million, correct?
Right.
So, why is that 1.2 million not subtracted from the slide above? If we're talking about a delta and we're going for, we have, then, as, if we dropped it from the sky, we're gonna have 7.1 million of taxes, but we currently have 1.2 million of taxes. That 1.2 needs to be taken off, so that we're talking about, when we get that final figure of 6.5, we're supposed to be looking at a new, new value. Same with excise taxes. I didn't see anywhere where the current excise taxes are accounted for.
We can certainly, we can certainly add that map in, Mr. Chairman, sure.
But I'm just saying, that's what we're looking at, right? I mean, we either need to look at total numbers or delta, and I think delta is important. So if we, Jean, can we go back up to the one above? If we look at, let's, and I love that you guys did a more aggressive than a more conservative numbers, that's good to have, right? So if our gross projected is 8.5, and then, so our gross projected is 8.5, then we take off either a million or two million, let's say we take off the 2 million, just to be conservative, then we're at 6.4 instead of 7.5, you know, 7.5. Then we need to take off 1.2 for the current property taxes, and then we need to take off the current excise taxes. Let's assume that's 250,000, because that's a quarter of, you know, what's being projected. So we're really taking off 1.4 million, and our net positive is 5 million. Again, nothing to sneeze at, but I just wanna make sure we're talking about the same numbers.
Yeah, Aton, I would like to maybe take it a step further. I'm actually pretty troubled that this material is being presented this way. It's very much apples and oranges. It's giving us the largest amount of revenue and the smallest amount of cost, because the revenue is gross total and the costs are just delta. So, I appreciate you fixing that, but I would ask that you also please improve the accuracy of how these slides and numbers are labeled. So for example, gross projected revenue, that's actually a good label because it's gross, but then you've got it labeled estimated municipal cost, but these are not, none of these are estimated municipal costs. These are all estimated additional municipal costs. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so it needs to be labeled accurately so that when people are trying to inform themselves of what you're proposing, they can understand. And for example, at the bottom, those are not total costs. Those are total additional costs. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, so, you know, I think we need to rely on you to give us, you know, apples and apples and accurate labeling, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I agree, I agree. So why don't we go to Ms. Barrett? She can take us through her, or did you, did you have more, Mark, did you have more? I'm sorry, I cut you off. Did you have more to say on the key findings, or?
Well, I guess it's pretty self-evident, you know? You know, this property is the largest taxpayer in town and will remain so. Obviously, we think that it's gonna be a good project, all-on-site maintenance will remain private, and we believe it's gonna create economic benefits beyond just the property itself, but for the region, so.
Okay, yeah, and I would also say that, I mean, these slides were meant as a summary, so we certainly understand that. I agree with Peter, that I think we just need to be accurate, but there is the, there's a much more in-depth report in the packet for anyone who wants to read that. I know some of the comments that we've gotten have been, you know, we wanna see all the data, and some have been, hey, we wanna see it in a more user-friendly manner. So I think you've provided us both of those, so I appreciate that. But I, you know, when I was reading, and I was thinking, hey, these are good numbers, but I wanna make sure that they're the right numbers. And so, to me, it was, you know, more four to five was probably a more accurate number of the net benefit, and that's the number that I'm interested in, is the net benefit. But why don't we go to-
Well, it wouldn't be that hard, Mr. Chairman, to chart together that summarizes that in a way that makes sense.
No, I agree. I think it is pretty easy, so I wish it would've been done already.
Thank you.
Ms. Barrett?
So, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I just put these headphones on. I was hoping it might deal with some of the background noise. So, just before I say anything, I kinda have to agree with Mark about the way he presented the numbers, because really what he's presenting is, here's the revenue that this development's going to generate, in my opinion, as a fiscal impact analyst, and here's what I think the costs are gonna be to serve this development. If you wanna net out your existing revenue to do it correctly, you also have to net out your existing costs. And we know that there are costs already incurred for serving this development, because we certainly heard that loud and clear from the police department. So, just to be fair to everybody, you know, if you wanna deal with true net, deal with true net on both sides. Otherwise, maybe just look at what's being presented as, here's what we think this development will do for your community when it's complete, and here's what we think it might do to your community in terms of demand for services. And, you know, I think just to be clear about, you know, what is, what are the questions that are being answered by a study like this? So, I just had to kinda jump in with that, but in terms of, you know, our role in this, we're really advisors to the town. And I think the way I kind of see our role is to try to identify questions that may be unanswered by the fiscal impact study, questions that may go beyond the scope of what the developer's fiscal impact analyst would do, and try to perhaps get the information to help answer some of those questions. So that's kind of what we're working on right now. You know, not so much to oppose or disagree necessarily with the developer's perspective on this as it's been presented, but rather to try to bring to the community information that we're getting, almost like in a second opinion type of process. So, we are looking at kind of a national trends on student housing, who the developers are that are building this stuff, and what schools are in this mode of working in partnership with private developers. The reason we're going that route is that we wanna talk to the communities and ask them, what did you think was going to happen when this project was proposed and ultimately, you know, started to build out? Has it turned out the way you thought it was going to? What do you wish you had known at the time, that maybe you would've asked if someone had actually, you know, thought about what the other questions would be? More to kinda help the town officials and the town manager in their negotiations with the developer to really have the best possible picture of what might we expect here, both in the end result, but then also as this project is built in phases. So that's what we're working on right now, and it's really, if you think of it as, you know, I guess maybe a second opinion on the fiscal impact, but also just perhaps looking at it from a different angle, taking kind of another approach, and see what conclusions we might draw that we can then offer to the town as a way to think about this project. But it's certainly an exciting opportunity for North Andover, and, you know, I think the issue is just kind of making sure that as this kind of finally unfolds, it's in everybody's best interests. I will add that about 15 years ago, I found myself in a very somewhat similar position in that the town of Hopington was facing a significant land use change in East Hopington with the sale of the Weston Nurseries Horticultural Operation. And so, Hopington suddenly found itself with like 750 or 800 acres of land that was no longer going to be in horticultural use. And so, that project was, it was a big project, and we did the same thing of, you know, the second opinion, the independent review, and I've stayed kind of involved with Hopington over time on this project, because guess what happened? The developer's most honest representation, you know, in the mid-2000s of what that project was going to be, knowing that it was gonna be at least a 10-year build-out, it changed over time. And of course, it was going to change, because the market changed. So, every once in a while, the town kinda had to sit down with the developer and say, okay, these are the assumptions we had going into this, these are things that are changed. How does this change the fiscal impact analysis that we were working with at the time this project was approved? So there's an opportunity to kind of, if you will, reopen sort of a developer's agreement and development agreement, and think about how perhaps unanticipated, you know, changes might be addressed. But I just share this with you because, you know, the very best developers in the world can say, this is what our project is, and this is what we think we're gonna do over 10 years, but markets do change. And so, the community's gonna wanna kind of have a way to be flexible in receiving what may be, in fact, a somewhat different development program six or seven or eight years out, if in fact it takes that long to build this development. So those are just some comments I would offer.
Okay, so what can you tell us about your thoughts about the methodology that was used, as well as kind of the, well, first the methodology, and then- As well as kind of the, well, first the methodology and then, I mean, why don't we start with the methodology and then we'll ask additional questions?
I, I don't think that the methodology is wrong. It's an acceptable methodology for, for many types of studies. The concern I have, which I think I've mentioned to, you know, the town manager and probably even put in the report that Gene has put up on this, on the screen, is, is simply, you know, when you're doing an, an analysis of a proposed housing development, you do exactly what Mark did. You know, you try to find comparable housing developments and you find out what the experience has been. And you use that experience to project forward what might be the likely impact of this development, assuming apples and apples. But when you have a mixed-use development, the questions kind of shift. And it's not necessarily the sum, the impact is not necessarily the sum of the housing impact, the retail impact, the office impact, the senior housing impact of each of those uses as they stand alone. So there's, there's got to be kind of a, almost a little pushing back, I think, maybe with the methodology to say, well, you know, this is, is this, is the summative approach really the one that, that's going to give the town the best answers it needs to plan for the impact of this development? And that's what we're wrestling with, and it's why we decided to sort of do more of a case study approach and, and do that sort of, what are the questions we perhaps should have asked that we didn't ask because we took this conventional approach? What are, what are the unconventional things we should be thinking about? So my, my criticism isn't that the, that the, that the study is all wrong, that the methodology is inappropriate. I think it's incomplete. From, from the town's point of view, I think it presents an incomplete picture.
What else do you think, or some highlights of information that you think we would need?
Understanding, you know, really, what, how the departments might end up responding to a project where the synergy of uses in the development is a different kind of impact than each individual use on its own. That's what we're trying to get at and looking at more the sort of mixed-use experience that includes student housing. So that's what we're trying to, that's what our research work is right now.
Good.
Is it fair to summarize it as the cumulative effect of these uses operating simultaneously?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Yeah, but cumulative like all at once and not necessarily spread out over time. But yes, Gene, I would say that's, that's a pretty accurate way to depict it. And we may find, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we come back to the town and say, you know what? The developers' impact estimate, estimate over, over states, the sort of negatives. It might. I don't know. Ironically, I'm not really questioning the number of school-aged children. I know that's what everybody looks at. It's always everybody's big issue. Whenever you build a single housing unit, the panic is how many kids are going to be in our schools? And, you know, first of all, as a, as a housing person, which I think most of you may know, that really is my, my number one kind of work in my field. You know, we always have to be a little bit careful on fair housing issues that we don't sort of unduly attack a certain kind of housing because there might be kids living in it. You can't do that. But, but I think that with mixed-use development, especially because I've done a lot of work in that area, you don't necessarily find a lot of school-aged children. You might find babies, you might find toddlers, you don't find that many school-aged kids. But the public safety experience is different. And I think that may be something that we really want to sort of look at. I think the other thing too, that often happens on these projects, some of the other municipal operations that seem almost to have a de minimis impact, sometimes that changes quite a bit too. Community services, you know, social service, health service type needs are sometimes different. And so those are the kinds of things we're trying to find out. You know, have we adequately looked at those, the impact on those services?
The costs for departments, fire, police, is it just salaries and benefits? Or do we consider future pension liabilities? That might be a question for the town manager or for the analyst. I'm not really sure.
I think I would probably refer that one to Melissa.
So it looks to me like OPEP was not accounted for. And what they took into account was the salary and regular benefits. So when we are talking about it, we would be adding on approximately $6,000 per person for a 10-year period.
Melissa, do you have any thoughts about the discussion that, that we had earlier about as a board or a town, should we be looking at total numbers or net revenue? I mean, to me, it seems, you know, to me, it seems like, one, we have to be talking about the same thing, either total, totals gross or total net. But to me, net is what's important. If we're talking about how many new kids, how many new officers, how many new fire department, how much new staff, how much new revenue should be the question, not how much revenue. But maybe, I mean, I don't know if I'm oversimplifying, but.
So the way I look at fiscal impact report and then the, you know, soon-to-be negotiated development agreement is what we want to be focused on is what the impact of this development is. Not the impact was already on the site, but the impact of what's going to be new. And so, yes, I think that's what we should be focusing, focusing on, we should be focusing on what the new benefits are and what the new burdens are.
I mean, yeah, net, I mean, I think it's got to be net and total. I mean, am I missing something?
Yeah, no, I mean.
I worked in finance for many years and you always look at incremental cash flow. You don't look at sunk costs because they're already there. So you look at the incremental revenue and you look at the incremental expense and you see what the, the delta is and that's, that shows the impact, so.
Right, so just, just as the proposal is not, you know, negatively consequence for the fact that there are X number of police calls now and Y number of fire calls and, you know, Z number of students, how much they're adding is what we're looking at.
Right, I mean, you know, probably, you know, if, if you broke the thing into two pieces, you would find probably today that the costs are greater than the revenue. And I think in the future, they, they will be positive. The question is how much?
Correct, right, right. So, I mean, it's, it, from what we can see, it looks like a significant potential source of revenue. Again, we're going to have to, you know, when we discuss, you know, the scale, we'll have to obviously, you know, revisit that if the scale changes. But the costs and revenues would presumably both, you know, move in some, you know, linear fashion. But, okay, I mean, I think to, to, to what Peter and I were discussing earlier and John's added on, I really think a chart showing net everything would be the most beneficial for us. So, okay. I'll go to other board members about this part and then we'll go to the school portion. So hold any school questions, but if you have just questions about what's been presented or comments about what's been presented so far.
I, I guess the question that I would have is I expected the numbers to be positive, but they're a lot more positive than I would have ever expected. And one of the areas that seems to me just intuitively doesn't make sense is the incremental revenue associated with this. If, you know, whether it's 7 million real estate taxes a rate or, you know, in total, whatever. But this would constitute close to 10% of the overall assessment we have today in town. And that seems high. I mean, if, if we're getting 1.2 million today from X property and we're going to a situation where the density is 4X and I won't even subtract out the, the, the fact that a good part of it isn't even going to be taxable, you would kind of intuitively expect somewhere around 5 billion of real estate taxes and the number's well over 7. It feels really high to me. I, and there's no backup. We have no detail. So I have no idea how that number was arrived at, but that just, to me, doesn't even come close to passing the sniff test.
Can we talk about where the numbers come from? I know I heard some information about the assessors or can we pull that up in the report? I think I remember.
Well, I don't have it, I don't have it on a slide, Mr. Chairman, but if you look in the appendix, all the numbers are there. It's not hidden at all. I go show where all the comps come from. I cite the comps. And again, I went over the, this table. If you, if you have my full report, you can go to the appendix. It's the first page in the appendix. It's on page 29. Right there. So, oh, you want to buy it? Right there. So this is, this is a summary of, of all the comparables that I used. The subject site is valued at 93 million. It's the biggest valued property in the community at this time. For the apartments, we use Berry Farms 40B Development. That's a brand-new apartment complex in the community. It's in your community now. They're valued right now at $201,000. They use the value of 200 per unit. The market rate units, I increased to 220. Market rate units are going to generate more revenue because there's no affordable units in it, so they're going to be worth more. The over 55 housing, we use the comp out of Burlington, Mass. Of a similar apartment building at 190 per unit. The townhomes are going to sell for 750. That was a fairly simple math equation there. The hotel, we use the hotel Homewood Suites in Andover, a local hotel, to come up with a value. The retail values were based on three area retail sites. The office space was based on 100, 100 Andover Bypass, which is a newer office building that the proponents thought was a good comparable. And then the parking garage, we use the local value from Prescott Street on the parking garage. So these are all local values, you know, explained right here in the summary chart. This again was reviewed by the town assessor. We went over these and he felt that they were sound to use for this analysis.
Melissa, any, were you involved in that or any thoughts on that?
So they were reviewed by our assessor, Bill Mitchell. The only one that I think could be maybe a little high would be the hotel. Just because Andover's property values tend to be higher than our property values do when you look at them. But the rest of these look pretty on point for what we're seeing.
So that's a, I mean, it's a very helpful chart for us to, to, to see as the comparisons and for it to get the data. Okay. Other board members have questions or comments about this, about, for the analysts or for Melissa about this portion? Aaron, anything?
I, I just wanted to, I guess, echo the point that Ms. Barrett tried to make regarding how conditions change over time. And maybe there'd be some value to an analysis that involves scenarios. We, we've heard from the proponent here that this is really a five-phase development plan over eight or so years. The fiscal analysis seems to propose, you know, it seems to be based on a full buildout. Well, what does this look like if it's not a full buildout? Conditions change and, you know, while, while phase one is the 40B and the student housing, what if we get to a point in, say, three years, as the, maybe as the, the market rate apartments start to go in, where conditions change? So what, what is that revenue? What do the costs look like in regard to that? I, I, I think that'd be an interesting exercise because I, I think I agree with Ms. Barrett saying that conditions will change. And I think that, that is, is a factor that could influence when, when the townspeople go to vote for this at town meeting. Just another factor for them to consider as to, you know, could the benefits that a full buildout be fully realized? Well, what, what if conditions change? What, what are we looking at in terms of a benefit? So I guess that's, that's really my only comment at this time on the fiscal analysis.
Okay, well said. Peter, any additional questions, comments on this portion?
No, thanks.
Kelly?
Yes, just one comment on the, the fiscal impact. So I know we spent a lot of time making sure, they were looking at gross or net, to do kind of apples to apples to make sure that comparison is there. But I also just want to make sure as we're looking at the benefits and burdens that everything is accounted for in the burdens, right? It seems like there are some things we, we just identified that might be missing. So knowing kind of that we've got that complete number and I think just being really clear on what timeframe are we talking about? Are these all just annual? Are some longer or some, just we, we know exactly what that list, you know, is we kind of the, the given, the gets. We know really clearly what that is. Thanks. Are the numbers every year, always, for, forever? Do they change?
Actually, Aton, I do have a question, but I'll wait until you're gone around.
Good question. On terms of the benefits, when we say, let's just say it's 5 million, is that a static figure for the entire project or is that a yearly benefit? That's, I guess that's a good point of clarity.
It, it's, it's the yearly. It's, it's based on a yearly cost. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and this is Michael Zano from Trinity. Just to, just to clarify, maybe to answer somewhat Aaron's question. You know, we did include in the report a, a phasing plan and that looks at.
On page 24, Mike.
Yeah, at, at both the costs and the, the revenues generated for each phase of the plan projected over the entire building. So I think it does address, at least to an extent, the question about the, the, the impacts over time and how they are addressed by this particular project. And we can go into that.
Page 24, Gene. Yeah.
Gene, if you will, I, I also am noticing, Gene, that you have pulled up the, the January report, which was, was, which was replaced, addressing some of the peer reviewers' comments with the April report. Yes, no, that's, that's not the, that's not the correct one.
But it didn't have the appendix, so this is the final.
It should be dated April 20th.
Yep.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. So we tried to break the project into different phases with this, with this outline. And obviously, it doesn't answer the question to point, obviously, if, if the program changes or we go portion away and the rest doesn't get built. But we tried to break up the, the project in segments. For example, in year one, that first column includes the student housing, the 385 40B apartments, 144-unit market rate apartments, 36,000 square feet retail and a restaurant. So, you know, we, we did that with the different components moving all the way through up to year 10 and tried to segment the costs out per year. That's so, so that gives you a little bit of a window of revenues and, and costs that could occur over time with different segments on there. This is an example. So obviously, if you can take a look at that and if it needs to be tweaked or run some other scenarios, you know, let us know.
I, I will say, I really like this chart as well as there's a similar type of chart in the school analysis that says, okay, if the, the 40B with the phasing of when the apartments would come online, 40B versus market rate and the years and how many students, as well as comparing that to other apartments coming online. That type of chart, I, I find very helpful in, in, in this review. So this chart, I think, is really good. Whereas I know we gave you some grief about the other chart in the summary. I think this type of chart is very helpful and the one that's coming up in the, in the school study I also found to be very helpful. Okay, Peter, did you have another comment before we move on to the school?
Yeah, please. Gene, can you go to the next page? No, it's, it's the one that had the fuller summary. I don't know what page that was on.
The program summary?
It was, yeah, the first page, there it is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So can you just talk a little bit about how you treated the student portion of this proposal in terms of revenue and, and service costs? You know, did you treat that as different sort of potential profile for, you know, police services for the student apartments or, let me rephrase that, public safety as opposed to the other residences? If you could just talk a little bit about how, how you were trying If you could just talk a little bit about how, how you were trying to estimate, uh, benefit and cost for the student portion of the residences?
Sure. Um, well, um, at this point, we did not give any value to the student housing, so it's not on this chart as far as income. Um, we treated it as a nonprofit and, and therefore, there's, there's no revenue coming off of it. Um, the major impact on the student housing on the community is with police calls. And we came up with an estimate, um, of approximately one-point-five-one call per unit, uh, which is high, but we wanted to be conservative. Um, the police department was very concerned about the housing component, um, to make sure that, that we adequately address potential, uh, issues there. Um, so it's one-hundred, uh, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven police calls. Um, we did a, a ratio of point-one-six-two on fire calls, uh, student, student housing for forty-one calls and EMS calls of twenty-eight. Um, so that the major impact was relative to, uh, police and fire. Um, we did, uh, also include some concerns, um, from the, uh, rec department. Um, there are students that use, uh, area rec facilities. Um, they sometimes, uh, use the basketball courts and others. And talking with that director, um, when we came up with a cost estimate for, for that department, we made sure to include, um, uh, it high enough to, to account for that concern.
Mark, how does the one-point-five-one for police calls on the student residences, how's that compare with the ratio you used on the other, uh, non-student?
Yeah, non-students about, uh, point-four-six. So it's significantly higher.
So it's about a three-fold, three-fold increase for the student?
Right. And, and, you know, to be honest, the reason I, the, the way I got to that number, um, you know, it, it's challenging to figure out at Royal Crest, you know, unless you look at, you know, find out who's living in each apartment and, you know, are they students? And, you know, getting data on the, on the apartment number. Um, so Berry Farms is at point-four-six-four today. Uh, that's the new forty-B development. So I made the assumption that the residential units at Royal Crest, the non-students, were point-four-six-four, um, as, as a, as a demand. Um, and did that math. And any extra calls, I assume were students, which may be a wrong way to look at it, but I thought that was the most reasonable way to approach it since we had the call data from Berry Farms, which is an in-town apartment complex. Um, so for right or wrong, that's, it's, it's a high number, but, um, I think it's a conservative number. And if it turns out to be less, that's, that's even better. But, um, we wanted to make sure we cover that concern for the department.
Okay, very helpful. Thanks, Mark. And did I hear you correctly? Uh, no revenue, uh, projected for any of the student residences?
Uh, correct. That wasn't accounted for in this analysis. Correct.
Yeah, I don't quite understand what you mean not accounted for. We're not planning to see any tax revenue from the student residences. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Aton, thanks. I'm all set.
Okay.
Just, just so I'm, uh, clear, the largest component of the real estate taxes for the property comes from the townhomes, correct?
Yeah.
And-
Yep. It's a hundred-and-seventy-nine million.
Yeah. The second-largest component comes from the, uh, the market-rate, uh, apartments.
Yep.
So that's, I think between the two of them, that's more than half. Does, does the value of the, per unit get derived by the, the rental roll for the units or something else?
It's typically by, uh, assessing departments typically use an income approach, um, to value. So they'll, they'll look at the annual revenue. They account for vacancy rate. Um, they account for expenses overhead. Uh, and then they use a cap rate, uh, to come up with value. Uh, that's typically how it's done. Um, the forty-B developments, obviously, twenty-five percent of the rooms are, are rent restricted, so their revenues are going to be less, uh, than a traditional apartment. Um, so they're, they're typically a, a lower value per unit than, um, a hundred percent market rate. Um, and actually finding a hundred percent market-rate new apartments is actually challenging today because in so many communities, the only apartments that are being built are fortyBs. Um, so.
Yeah. Okay. Kelly, did you have something?
I did. It was on the same, just trying to understand the same information. So I just, but I'm still not clear. I apologize. So just looking at this table, um, I'm just trying to understand the townhomes line where it has the owner occupied and then going through is the value per unit is the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. So just to make sure I understand that, is that looking at the comparison sites? Or is that saying that the value of each one of the townhomes would be, would be assessed at seven-hundred-and-fifty?
Yeah, that's what we're assuming. Yes. There's no, there's no cost there.
Each one of the townhomes?
Yes. Yeah.
So expensive townhomes. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Um, okay. So why don't we go to the school study?
Thank you.
I don't know. Maybe five years from now, I don't know. But today, you might be able to get that.
Well, if, if you had ten of them, but if you have two-hundred-and-sixty of them, that's a different story.
All right. So who are we going to hear from on the schools?
I can happen to start in kind of, um, tee it up a little bit. This is Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
So we took kind of an unorthodox approach here. What we did was we had a original, uh, school capacity study done. And, and I'm a big fan of school capacity studies when we have a large project like this because it really lets us boil down not only what we think the impact will be student population, but also what the impact will be to the individual schools. And I think that's really important as we're doing this work. So we hired, um, the first consultant, which was Arthur Wegman, and he put together a pretty full analysis, um, not only taking into effect what the impact of Royal Crest would be, but also looking at what much of our other development recently would cause for the schools. Uh, after we got that product, we really were looking at, um, uh, the number in totality, not really thinking about what the net impact would be, kind of a lot like where our conversation was, uh, previously in this meeting. So we had, um, a second consultant who was with us tonight and was pay-review our own product and look at what the impact of the Royal Crest product, project would be on the schools. And so when you take those two reports together, I think they give us a really strong analysis. Um, and we do have, I believe, Justin is here with us as well as, I know someone else is here too, um, to kind of walk us through their report, which I think gives us a really good idea of what this project's impact will be.
So, good. Thank you. Uh, my name is Justin Humphries. I'm with TBA Architects, the principal of TBA Architects. And also with me is Anika Nelson-Rips, uh, project manager with Architects. Um, we are a, a multi, um, our general practice firm, but we specialize in, in school work in particular, uh, working with, uh, school districts that are on their way towards, uh, going for MSBA projects and those that, um, have, have been recently denied, denied MSBA projects, both ends of which spend quite a bit of time really having to look at what are the real needs of the schools and, and, and what is the capacity of the schools and, and having to think hard about, uh, what work needs to be done. So, um, our approach here was to take a look at, uh, yep?
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but Mark and I think Aaron, could you mute, mute your computers? We're not talking. We're getting a little feedback. All right. Thank you. I apologize.
Sure. Sure. Uh, so what we did is we took both the Fugier report and the Wegman report. Um, and, uh, you know, I think in both, um, you know, we agreed with the, the logic and, and the way in which the, uh, numbers, um, that were arrived at in, in both of them. And so what we did, but the numbers, the ultimate, uh, at least in the, the first round of, uh, that we were given of the Fugier report, uh, the number was quite different from what the, um, Wegman report came up with. And so, uh, our approach was to take what we saw as the, um, sort of the best ratios, uh, most applicable ratios, uh, for each type of development, uh, or, or, uh, living unit and number of bedrooms and to essentially rebuild, uh, those charts that were, were used in both in order to come up with, uh, an ultimate number, a total number of students, uh, school-aged children who would be in the development at full build-out. Um, and then arrived at a hundred-and-twenty-six students net, uh, additional students in, in the development. Uh, in addition to that, we also, uh, said they're likely, because of the, the overtime and, and, uh, the, the students, uh, there'd be displacement, um, with the existing, uh, families. But some would likely relocate in town, so there's some consideration to be had there. Uh, exactly where they would relocate is unknown, but some factor included in that. Um, ultimately, uh, we then took the, uh, net number of students and had a look at what the impact to the school would be in a couple of different ways. One, over time, uh, the, uh, when units come online, how many additional students would be, uh, potentially entering, uh, the, the schools at that time? Um, and then the other, to look at what does that number, uh, mean to each of the elementary schools and the middle school? Uh, and in that bit of analysis, we, we took into account, uh, the current capacity study that, that, that's ongoing right now with the schools and looking at, uh, you know, what they have, comparing that to both the district's goal of maximum number of students per classroom as well as, uh, looking, because the capacity study uses MSBA, um, data and, uh, uh, spreadsheets to, to, to figure out. And they have a, a cap, uh, of students per classroom that's a few higher than, uh, what North Andover schools are, are looking to do. So we wanted to have a look at, at what would that mean, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, the impact to the classrooms? Uh, would additional classrooms be needed? And so that's what's in the charts there. And I think that, you know, there's considerations, uh, that, that need to be made because in most cases, the, uh, maximum number of students per classroom would be over the goal, uh, number of twenty students, uh, per class. But there were other things that we found in the, uh, ongoing, uh, schools, um, capacity analysis that had to do with, uh, specialized programs and existing, um, uh, portable classrooms and things that are, that are on-site and other, other things that, that need to be addressed and would need to be taken into consideration as, as, uh, these numbers are dealt with as well.
Okay. And is there a good chart for us to look at? Or are there conclusions for us to? I mean, the, the data is all here. Looked through that. So we have the one-twenty-six net over a period of time. You know, it looks like that's, um, you know, eight years out, four years out, looking at seventy.
Eaton, it's, it's very hard to hear you. Got a lot of feedback.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I didn't get most of that question. Apologies.
Okay. How about now? All right. Can you mute? Justin, can you mute while you wait?
Sure.
Okay. How are we doing? All right. Well, we'll try. So are there any conclusions or specific charts that we should be looking at? You've said a hundred-and-twenty-six new school-aged children over a period of eight years phased in. But what should we, uh, this is either for Justin or Melissa. What should we be looking at? What do we have the capacity for? What would we need to do if this project came online as-is? What, what does this a hundred-and-twenty-six mean to us as a town?
Uh, so what I see, and I think we, you know, we focused on, on two schools. There is, uh, data, I think it's, uh, attached or last, um, page of this. We looked at, at, um, three of the elementary schools, uh, as well as the middle school. Uh, ones that, that, um, I guess would, would most, the ones most probable to, to, uh, take the, the impact or the increased students, uh, overall. And I think what we found is that, you know, in, in, um, all but one case, uh, at the elementary schools, the total hundred-and-twenty-six, if the full build-out, you know, happens according to plan, the total hundred-and-twenty-six would put, uh, the number of students in every, uh, classroom over the, the school's, uh, district's goal of twenty. But there are only a few instances where you'd, uh, be bumping up against the, what the MSBA uses as twenty-three students, um, in the planning. And that's the number they use in, in, in sort of, um, you know, as you're considering, uh, major renovation and, and, um, replacement of school buildings.
So I'll just add that this becomes a really helpful tool for us now, um, twofold. One, because we will be able to use this data to, um, negotiate our development agreement. But two, because we're in the middle of doing the facilities master plan too. And so having this as a tool when we're doing applications to MSBA, when we're making planning, um, and space determinations is really important. So we're really thankful to Justin, um, for, for really flushing this out for us. Uh, but one of the things that I think is going to be really important as we kind of move forward with this process and, and we look at the Fugier report and we think about, um, doing future analysis is that it's one thing to say it's going to be a hundred-and-twenty-six students and to try to attach a number to that. It's another thing to try to basically program those a hundred-and-twenty-six students, which is what we're trying to do through this document. And so the next steps for me will be to meet with Jamalee and Superintendent Gilligan so that we can start to program this in and see if there's going to be other financial impacts that are population-sensitive. Um, and as we do that, I will keep you abreast of our conclusions.
So the question?
Sorry, can I add real quick?
Can?
We, we discussed the, the capacity of what the, the town's class-size goal and, and MSBA's and how this impacts. But it should be noted that the schools, the classroom sizes are also, uh, filter into that, uh, a bit. And these classroom sizes existing are smaller than the MSBA's recommendation. So your twenty kids per class is probably, um, a better metric for, for the size classrooms that you have. So when you're talking about fiscal impact, I think, um, that report talks about annual costs. There is, uh, the one-time, uh, initial costs of, of building and, and buses potentially. And, um, that, that is a significant consideration based on the data we looked at.
Kelly, did you have something?
I, I did. So I'm sorry. I'm just trying to understand this. I'm just, does this mean, you know, if, um, Royal Crest moves forward and we've got the a hundred-and-twenty-six students? I know that was the higher number that they were proposing. Does this mean that, uh, just, do we need a new elementary school? Is that what this is saying? Or to be determined? Or there's other options? Because I know there's other, you know, there's a lot going on right now in terms of consideration with the schools and capacity. But just, is that what this is saying? It's time?
I, I think that, um, what, what this, uh, at least what we see is that this, um, certainly exacerbates some existing things that the district is already working on, on coping with. And, and that is the, the, uh, smaller than, the, the classroom size itself, area of a classroom is smaller than what a new school building would have and what would be programmed in an MSBA, uh, uh, you know, funded school. Um, so you're, you're looking- So you're looking at a smaller class. You're looking at schools right now that already have some additional modular or portable classrooms in what was intended to be temporary that you're working with right now. And you're still, you know, close to or or beyond capacity in a couple of cases. And then you also have schools, and this is a, I think, you know, certainly statewide, is that the schools, vast majority of which were not designed with the way that we currently educate students. And with a lot of small group and pullout and specialized education, you're talking about school buildings that have traditional classrooms and sort of older spaces in them. So there's a number of things there. The other is, and that's why we were looking at this, you know, being phased in over a number of years. If you look at it and it depends on where the students go, if they're all at one school or if they're dispersed potentially between a couple of schools, you have sort of more or less time in which, you know, you get to that getting over your maximum of 20 in the schools. So for example, if, you know, according to at least the data that was provided in the reports, in 2025, you might have 70 additional students. These charts, these sort of end charts, we're looking at the 126 total in there. So if we ran these numbers with 70 split between two schools, you might have, you know, more time before you're up against that limit.
To me, what it's saying is that it would require additional planning at a minimum. So just adding these students to our current schools, to specific elementary schools, like to Atkinson Franklin Kittredge and the middle school, that now we start, if we just added these without doing anything else, added these students, we'd be bumping up or going over the recommended number of students per class. So that gets us back into the fiscal analysis that we did of what you have to add teachers. But it's not as easy as just adding teachers because some of these schools already don't have room for additional classrooms, things like that. So, you know, as Melissa mentioned, there's a school capacity study already ongoing. And most of the suggestions say, okay, you know, add or renovate to Atkinson, add or renovate to, you know, one of the other elementary schools, add or renovate to the middle school. So this increases the need for that. But I guess we don't necessarily have the answer to, and I think that's what Melissa was talking about with, you know, her future meetings of in our current capacity analysis and the things that we're going to hopefully be doing anyway, can this be incorporated into that without issue? Or does it make it so, you know, certain ideas are not able to if this went forward? And I think that's where it gets pretty complicated.
I mean, I agree. The whole subject of school capacity planning is incredibly complicated. You're looking out over extended years. You're looking at demographic trends. You're looking at a lot of different things. And it's not a perfect science. And the impact on growth is not just this project, it's other projects and so forth. So it's, at one level, it's not fair to burden this specific developer with the overall impacts. But nonetheless, I guess the way I would frame it is if we're doing a fiscal impact study and we say, these are the revenues and these are the expenses, and don't mention the overall potential impact of this contributing to some really large capital investments we have to make as a town in schools, I think that's misleading as well. So I still don't kind of like, at one level, taking 126 students at full buildout, spread over 12 grades, or an average, I'm making this up, 10 per grade doesn't seem like a very big impact. But maybe looking at all that mixed data says it is going to create an impact in conjunction with other projects. And I mean, are we ever going to get a firm answer in this? I guess, I don't know.
Well, I think the school capacity study that's going on now and telling us what our issues and concerns are now will help a lot. But like you said, it's hard to imagine out over 10 years. And then, I mean, I think to Melissa's point is, it's, this is one of the biggest things you try to work into a development agreement, right?
Right.
Right? That's, you know, and that's outside the fiscal impact, right?
Yeah. I think it's, it's a fiscal, it's a macro fiscal. That was my point is to say that fiscal cases solely these revenues against these expenses, there's more to it than that. And this school thing is the big overhang there.
Correct. So I don't think whatever the number is for the fiscal impact, whether it's 2 million net positive, 3 million, 4 million, 5 million, 6 million, 7, 8, I don't think you can say that that's never going to be enough to build a new school, right? If it gets so bad at Atkinson that you have to build a new school, that's not going to cover it. So there's got to be something. These numbers have to be kind of firmed up and a plan firmed up with what we're doing in general. And those things have to be combined. And that's where you get your development agreement that, okay, if we need to add X, Y, or Z, that's taken care of in some way. Not an envious position to try to do, but that's why I think we have those committees. And I know I've seen the surveys and I've seen some of the work that they're doing. And it's intense and it's hard and it's, but it's very worthwhile. Does that help, Kelly?
It does. I mean, it's not an answer. I think that, but I'd get that we don't have one yet. And there's a lot of work going on to help get us there. But I think this is very important to many of, you know, all of us, right? And many people in the town. So I think as we drive there, having kind of that clarity and knowing what we need to do. But, you know, by the numbers will help a lot of people decide where they want to be on this. And I get just another question on the numbers. So talks about
You frozen? Everything was down. No signal.
Here we go.
Can anyone hear us? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I can hear you now. Everyone was frozen for a minute, but.
That was odd. Okay. Yeah, that was different. Okay. Okay. Well, we'll come back to Kelly's question when she is able or we're able. Is Melissa still here?
I am.
Anything kind of on that discussion or?
Yeah. I mean, it certainly is complicated and multifaceted. I think that having this report puts us in a much better position to start making decisions, which I appreciate. And, you know, I hate to say that we need time, but I think unfortunately we do. The school group is meeting and hoping to have a recommendation to the town in the summer. So that will give us a thought better idea of what their final determination will be. That determination will come back to me to give to the architect to start kind of inserting into the facilities master plan two with the hope to have that included in the September capital improvement plan. So a lot of work to be done in a really short period of time. But the good thing is, is that this gives us a metric at not looking only at Royal Crest, but at other development that we've seen and allows us to make smart decisions. So we can at least start costing out what some of that will look like. And we will continue to communicate with you as we do that.
So can I, so I guess the ultimate question. So one question, when we had the traffic analysis in, and I think kind of Peter asked this question very nicely was, you know, we built out a certain amount of capacity. This takes up a certain amount of capacity. Do we have the room for this and for future projects? So are we able to, like, say we had a special town meeting in October, would we be able to get an answer to the really important question of can we handle X projected amount of students? And what would that answer look like?
Yes, we should be able, so we should have been able to model out by that point. But there's a lot of contingencies, right?
Got it. Yeah.
But yes, we should be able to start modeling out what that will look like.
Okay. Kelly, you back?
I am back. Sorry. The puppy tripped over the wireless. Yeah. Yes, sorry. Do you have a question just about the numbers? Talks about the number of students, the current number of students enrolled. Isn't it really just look at the number of North Andover students that are enrolled in the North Andover public schools? Or does it look at the total possible population? And why I'm asking is whether fact or perceived, there seems to be, there's a lot of concern that students, the parents of students outside of the school versus the private schools versus the public schools. I'm not being honest. I don't know what those numbers are. It was 1% or 2%. And I have no idea. I'm just wondering, is we're looking at our enrollment numbers? Or is it really possible enrollment or actual?
The numbers that we used are the, it seems to be actual numbers. They were taken from the capacity analysis study that is ongoing right now. So typically, when you're filling out these MSBA sheets, you're using the most recent actual enrollment numbers of each individual school.
Did you have our concern to look at those other students that are not to be addressed about? What could we, what could our enrollment be?
Sorry, I broke up a little bit, but I think you're asking, is there a consideration for whether some students enrolled in private school or something would
Come back to the public?
Would come back?
If we had this, and just trying to make sure we're looking at the complete picture or hear that, know that the number's so small or it just doesn't make sense or that's not, shouldn't be the thing that we do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a factor necessarily that I could say we can apply to that. But these are just the actual numbers that are, were enrolled as of, I'm assuming, October 2020.
But Justin, the Wegman Report does get into population trends, including birth rates.
It does. Yes.
It does. So you can, if you look back, it's interesting. Our school population has actually been decreasing over the past five years. And birth rates have actually been decreasing. So if you, if you look at the beginning of his report, it does get into that population sensitive data and what is driving our school population.
Okay. Let's see. Anyone else have comments? Aaron? I don't know if Aaron's still here. Peter?
I have nothing.
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. John, anything else?
Oh, fine.
Okay. I think that's very helpful. Good information for us to have. And I think we'll start taking up some of the answers to questions and comments we've had regarding the fiscal. And just keep moving forward. Jean, anything come in that we need to deal with?
Checking right now. Nope, nothing new.
Okay. So why don't we continue to have our discussion on May 18th?
Okay.
Thank you very much. This was very helpful tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Appreciate the attention. Thank you.
Anything else on the agenda? Okay. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Motion made by John. Can we get it in a second?
Second.
All in favor. John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.